All right. For some reason, I hear audio on this laptop. Hold on one second. All right. Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, January 28th. Just as a note, the vice chair is unable to make it tonight due to an illness. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to begin with public comments. Are there any public comments from the board?
I do have one. I just wanted to take a moment to revisit a comment that I had made last week because I think it's important to highlight again, especially for those who didn't catch it because the live stream on Facebook started a little bit late, even though I know it's on YouTube, I just wanted to give this plug again. Last week, I shared that the Lunenburg Snow Rider stepped up in response to a request from the Lunenburg, or I'm sorry, from the Snowmobile Association of Massachusetts to assist victims of Hurricane Helene in North Carolina. In just seven days, our community came together and donated between 500 and 700 pounds of winter clothing and bedding. These donations were delivered to families in need and made a real difference. I just wanted to make sure to give another shout out to the snow riders and everyone who contributed in this effort. It's a wonderful example of how our community's generosity can have a meaningful impact, and I'm really proud to see Lunenburg and Townsend working together to help others.
Thanks, Amanda.
I will also want to announce that on Monday, this coming Monday, the assessors' office and the Board of Assessors will be offering a program at the Council on Aging at the Adult Activity Center at 1:00 PM regarding taxes for and potential tax relief that are available for seniors. So that will be a presentation at the Senior Center for, or Adult Activity Center, Old Habits Die Hard, on Monday at 1:00 PM.
All right. Thanks, Tom. Any public comment from the public? Yep, come on up. And then just state your name and address before you start.
Hi, George Burden, 39 Cortland Circle.
Sorry, George, we saw him in the room, but we'll get back to you. No, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Page Street. My wife and I are here because we're at our wits' end with the town violating its own town bylaws on repeat. We submitted for a COC request for 564 Page Street, which was our old residence. We started that in June. We went through the process, we submitted through the portal, we had four walk-throughs with Sophie. She marks us as a pass. Mid-October comes, we go to the board, the Conservation Commission has a meeting, we're on the agenda. They vote to continue it without a finding until next spring, 2025, to moderate some growth with plants, which was a violation of the town bylaw because they didn't vote within 21 days from the request, and that they didn't offer a response in writing, yes or no, which was their own bylaw. So that's violation one and two. We sent an email to Ms. Aubrey, and we state our concerns about the violation of the bylaw and how they can just extend it instead of getting us a yes or a no. She puts together a meeting with the land use manager. They state that the bylaw was indeed violated. We get put back on the next meeting. November 6th, we're now on the meeting again. They're unable to cite why they're going to continue it. They have no reason, and they cannot point to any sort of text saying why they're going to deny it. I asked multiple times, is there something that you can cite in this order of conditions? Yes or no? She resorts to, one of the members resorts to control effing the document on public record, looking, not being able to find anything. And then they find a section and just unilaterally decide, this says established growth, we're going to go with this. And I said, that doesn't fit, but if you're going to deny me, put it in writing. She tells me on public, Mary tells me on public record, I'm not putting it in writing, you can look at the meeting minutes for the decision. That's what she tells me. I point out that that's a violation of the town bylaw, and she says, too bad. That's violation number three. The meeting minutes come out, and they reference a chapter and section that is non-applicable to our order of conditions, which they should know because they were the ones that made it. So now I file a formal complaint with the town, and I go back and forth via email and Ms. Aubrey. Eventually, I get a response from the interim town manager, saying that it was a violation. Now we're back on the next meeting, and we're going to be issued a written denial. The written denial they gave us doesn't apply. It doesn't even fit. I just don't see where we go from here. I can't appeal it because I don't have a written denial. So I'm being held, we're about day 84 instead of day 21. We don't know what else to do.
All right. Sorry, I don't really know anything about this case, but Carter, is there anything that you want to say about this?
The bylaw does call for an issuance of a response within 21 days. However, your bylaw does not set forth that failure to do that is a constructive approval. That is something that should be addressed in the near term. Your bylaw does state that the denial should explain the reasons for it. Adam Costa's recommendation, working with Sophie, they are drafting a formal letter which will be on the agenda of the Conservation Commission. That will be rectified. I hope that nothing like this happens again, but it will put into, and I'm so sorry, I can't say your last name correctly. It will put that in a place where he can then make any formal appeals that he wishes to make. And hopefully Sophie can guide the Conservation Commission, who are volunteers, that going forward, there need to be a little bit tighter on some of their practices. That's really all I can tell you tonight.
Can from, just first, I'm hearing it. Can you say just briefly what you're asking them and what they're denying?
I asked them for a certificate of compliance, which is a closure to an order of conditions on a property. And I was denied, I was no voted on unanimously by the board, the Conservation Commission. Then I brought it back up, and I said, you have no text and no case to not deny me. Two people abstained from voting at that point and refused. Then they issued a response via the meeting minute, which literally doesn't fit. You can reference, you can look at all the data, it's all there, it does not fit. It is a non-applicable box. That's the only thing she gave me because she said, you can look in the minutes, I'm not going to give you a written response. And I said, that's a violation of your bylaw. And she said, too bad. It's on the record. And now I'm going to get another set of answers when I was already told that the reason I was denied was reasons, Chapter 19, Section 6. And that doesn't even apply. So now I'm back at the table with double, triple jeopardy for another reason, because the first reason didn't pan out. So now we're going to go on to reason two. I just don't see how the town continually violates the bylaw. There's no repercussion, and yet I just keep playing catch-up. I violate the town bylaw when we were doing the septic system in 2017. I had to pay a ton of penalties, I take responsibility, that was on me. I did everything that they said, they set forth the order. They wrote the order. I did everything the order said, and now they violate their own bylaw because they don't, for whatever reason, want to issue this, and I can't figure out why, and they can't prove or articulate why.
For the record, Mr. Chair, I will say that, as this board knows from other things, I'm not a big fan of anybody, volunteer or not, violating our bylaws. Bylaws are there for reasons. It's for expectations and for consideration for the town and for the residents and anybody coming before this town. So I think we need to get an explanation why something that supposedly should take 21 days is now, what did you say, day 84?
Yes.
That is not acceptable.
Will you send me an email, just so I have your contact information, so I can follow up to?
I'll forward it to you.
You will? Okay. So I'll reach out and try to get some clarification on that.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. Any other public comment? Mr. Burden.
George Burden, 39 Cortland Circle. That was just an interesting, I guess, some comments there, but Mr. Alonso, maybe you can help us with our situation where our special permit in our HOA has been violated multiple times. The, Brian Gingras has acknowledged that and has not responded to my emails probably for over six, seven, eight months. So maybe you can help with that situation as well. But what I did want to raise, Amanda, I did receive your email today. We've responded to an email very similar to Mr. Alonso regarding the same thing. I'm not being rude or anything, but I'm not going to respond to your email in regards to, it's the same reason of why we're making these public records requests. And so the town absolutely knows, and you guys are absolutely clear, of why we're making these, is we're finding information and police reports that are totally false information being reported to the police, police reports created on our behalf stating that we're home, Mr. Pratt comes over to our house and does a, what we'll call a, I forget what he even called it. We were, my daughter was in the house, I was outside taking pictures of Mr. Pratt. It's ridiculous. And you got false information, anybody would be doing what I'm doing, and I've talked to people about it. Being framed and the town of Lunenburg not helping us and knowing what we're going through is disgusting. That's one comment. What I also want to raise is what's even kind of more disgusting is a Lunenburg Facebook page. I know it's not now sponsored by the town of Lunenburg, but their residents, it's a page that's for residents only, there's residents, there's citizens, not residents of Lunenburg, that are commenting about my family's mental health. I welcome anybody to call my family and call my house and discuss this with us. We would love to speak to you about it. What we find even more interesting is we reached out to the admin of this Facebook page and asked for us to be provided access. We're a Lunenburg resident, and we did not get access, we can't even defend ourselves and tell the town why we're requesting these things. One of the things I also want to let the town know is that we raised concerns about real estate taxes. We were trying to help the other residents in the town at the lake area where there was taxes raised 110%. We felt bad for those residents when our taxes went down 33%. I'm not the type of guy that takes a, you know, a pat on the back or whatever to help screw someone else. I'm not that type of guy, I'm going to look at the right thing, my family's going to do the right thing here, and I'm just telling you that we tried to help other residents in this town, and now we're getting attacked. It's disgusting. And some of these residents that were making comments on a Facebook page that we don't have access to are residents from the lake area that we were trying to help, they're also teachers, which is more disgusting. We're finding a very pattern that these individuals that are coming at us are teachers. Can you imagine that? Mrs. Alth is one of them, there's two other residents that are making comments, it's disgusting. And we've gone to the town, we've been here for a year and a half, no one wants to talk to us. So this is where we are, and I'm just going to make that comment and leave it at that. But it's not, we're trying to protect our family from being framed, so the town can understand where we're coming from.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Burden. All right, moving on, we do have an executive session on the agenda, I added it just in case we would need it. Is there anything else with regards to the town manager contract that any members would like to discuss in executive session tonight?
No.
No? All right, cool, so then we can skip over that. And then we'll move on to the interim town manager report. Carter.
My last one?
Your last one.
There were budget meetings aplenty, which included the beginning of a modest reorganization of SUD budget line items as finance begins to review and reorganize the chart of accounts. We are looking at how to best organize IT services to a full service contract as opposed to a hybrid of backup service and staff. DPW facilities and utilities have been working together to present several budget scenarios which will prove efficient and improve staffing. The Council on Aging budget, if approved, as I'm recommending it, will modestly, with modestly reorganized staffing, will offer four and maybe five meals a week to our seniors instead of the current two meals per week, which I think will be a welcome addition to those folks. The DPW director and I met again with Shaw and Sons to review their proposed realignment of the routes. We expect to have them before you on February 18th. The facilities director met with the building commissioner and the fire chief in conjunction, continuation of developing the plan to decommission portions of TC Passios. The staff reviewed the latest Ritter plans and provided comments to the MBDC. Comments, cost estimates remain forthcoming on that and TC Passios. As I said, the budget for the Council on Aging I've signed off on and assessing as well, but in reviewing the revaluation, the DLR has submitted a set of directives that must be completed prior to the next revaluation, so we may have to provide them with some funding to start kicking this effort off in FY '26. The two elements that the assessors want to get moving on is both a review of the neighborhood indexes, particularly around the lakes, and the chapter lands have not been audited in a considerable amount of time. They need to all be either satellite or visually inspected and checked off on. I'm pleased to report that thanks to the hard work of the school and the finance staff, you have $200,000 in funding coming your way from the Smart Growth Program. Unfortunately, it offsets reduction in other areas, but it is thankfully there, and I really want to thank Dr. Burnham, her staff, and Izzy and his team. We finally have our FY '26 revenue estimates, which now include the Governor's House One. By way of context for the coming budget discussions, there's approximately $1.25 million in new monies, anticipated, which yields the town side of the house $520,000 in new revenues, against your retirement assessment, which has gone up $325,000 by itself. On the projects, both DPW projects, the roof and the garage floor are complete, we only await warranties and final invoicing to close them out. The town hall roof replacement and chimney restoration continues, but, you know, if not plagued by cold temperatures today, by high winds. Completion remains as February 28th, but they may need an extension due to our leak getting it off the ground and the weather conditions. Those same issues are holding up the start of the Ritter building roof and gutter repairs, but I am pleased to tell you that the library teen room expansion began this past Friday and remains on track. I'm also pleased to tell you that the work for the Council on Aging kitchen will be under commitment by Thursday, and once I sign those, I'll be pleased to announce we will close out the FY '21 capital program. I'm urging the incoming town manager to continue with the weekly project meetings that I'd instituted during ARPA and capital reviews to try to keep projects moving forward. We are down to only having two vacancies that we have to continue to advertise. We have the assistant to the sewer business manager, we do have two interviews scheduled, and again, the team is working on possibly realigning some of the duties for a better flow, perhaps not trying to split Sam across both facilities and DPW. I'm leaving that to the staff to come back to me on. We've had one meeting, and I think it was a pretty good one. We have the police chief, which is open for recruitment. We're in the final stages of bringing a police officer appointee before you, they had their physical I believe today, I just don't have the results and can't get a name out in front of you. Well, it won't be me getting the name out in front of you, but till your next, hopefully your next meeting, and the final background on the PAC videographer. We have the boards and committee vacancies. Again, I'd like to highlight, we do have the Personnel Committee, which is important, it cannot function at this point in time, but again, as I did last week, I really want to encourage folks to apply for the Finance Committee, that is two vacancies, and this is the single most critical time of the year for that committee, and frankly, the very best time of year to get full immersion in how government functions and how we finance it, and the Stormwater Task Force as well, which I think has great potential for addressing financial needs in FY '27, based upon how I've seen that evolving. And that ends my report for you this evening, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Carter. Any questions or comments?
I want to thank him for the report.
All right. Thank you very much, Carter. All right, moving on to current business, potential vote to approve town manager contract. Is there any discussion on the contract?
No.
For the viewers, I think you should review some of the pertinent parts of the contract before you vote on it.
Anything in particular that you want to go over?
People are going to want to know probably compensation, most importantly, just so they, I mean, it's going to be, after tonight, it'll be a public record anyway, but people will want to know, you know, what the term is, I guess, that's another, another good one.
Sure. For compensation, we're starting at $165,000. There will be a bump up to $169,125 on July 1st as part of a increase, and then the following year, it'll go up to $173,353, which is still just a little bit under what we advertised the position for, which was $174,000 plus or minus. The term is for three years.
Well, two, not even, not even two and a half, right. 29 months, I think.
29 months.
Both of the increases, I would point out, are two and a half percent increases, so.
Anything else you want to add?
Otherwise, everything, everything, we've revamped a little above the performance evaluation that will, that will have a potential for, for bonus pay, depending on what the composite scoring is. Otherwise, everything is exactly as it was when we've had our previous two town managers, really.
All right. So are we at a point where there's a motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion that we approve the contract of the new town manager, Jennifer Warren Diamond, term to begin next Tuesday, February 4th, 2025.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
I look forward to her starting. I think I speak for all of us when we're looking forward to her starting.
I do as well.
As do I. Thank you, Tom, for all your effort.
Oh, my pleasure.
All right, moving on to minutes, warrants, action items. None of the minutes were added to the drive, so we'll skip over that. We don't have any warrants tonight. Any action items?
I do. I was looking at our current policies and how the agenda is set up, and it looks like the, the way it is, is the town manager, it's the town manager's responsibility to maintain our agenda with the chair. But I was wondering if we could potentially add an item to discuss having the agenda setting process be more collaborative, not changing the policy, you know, still abiding by it, but, you know, potential for the board members to have input on the agenda. I was also considering if we could have like a standing item, like we already do here for action item updates, because it seems like we keep having action items that I think kind of are getting left off. I also think that we should discuss enforcing the section of our policy that several members have brought up previously about when agenda items need to be submitted. In our policy, it says they need to be submitted by close of business on Tuesday and background materials by Thursday. I think if we make some changes or have some discussion, it would align with our goals, you know, about communication and transparency. Was hoping to put that on an agenda item soon.
Okay. I wrote all that down. The one thing about agenda topics, members can recommend or request agenda items, and they're pretty much always added, so that part is there. I can, I mean, we can have the discussion on it, I guess I don't know what about the policy would really change to make it even more collaborative than that.
I don't want to change the policy, other than I, just, I guess I just had a suggestion that may be keeping an update on action items.
Yeah.
And then, you know, I'm still new to the board, so figuring out what the process is of, you know, how the agenda works, or, you know, if we can help you in terms of setting things up or enforcing, you know, when things get added to the drive, that kind of thing.
Yeah, that's one of the things I really wanted to have a conversation with Jen about, so we can really do better at that, and I think there's the opportunity there for that. I do like the idea of tracking agenda items a little better, or not agenda items, excuse me, action items. So that's one thing that we can definitely do better, making sure that they're tracked and reported regularly, so that definitely is something that we can improve.
And I'm not sure if I mentioned it, I was bringing this up because she's starting, I thought that maybe, you know, with a new town manager starting, that maybe we just look at the process a little bit.
Yep, I agree. All right, thank you. Any other action items?
No.
Nope.
Committee reports.
Capital planning meets tomorrow, Zoom meeting only, 7:30. I think Mr. Ternzini is going to be presenting us with his prioritization, that's at least my expectation, of the budget, and we will review that with him and make changes if necessary, but we will, we've not seen it, so we'll wait till tomorrow.
Stormwater Task Force met last Thursday. We plan on submitting an article to annual town meeting just to give an update, just kind of what we've been thinking about, what could be coming. And school committee met last week, so I don't know if you saw in the ledger, there was an ad, and I think they also posted over at the library and the Adult Activity Center, looking for volunteers to be on the superintendent's screening committee. So there's Carol Archibald and Brian Layton representing school committee, and then they want 10 members of the town. So I think they're meeting tomorrow night to choose, the letters were due today, so they'll be meeting tomorrow night to choose members for that screening committee. And at last week's school committee meeting, Dr. Burnham presented, it's not their budget, but just an overview of what the costs look like for what they have in place now, what those costs look like today. So the budget has started. Discussions have started, as Carter mentioned. And that's it.
Economic Development Committee met on the 23rd. They discussed their meet and greet that happened back in, was that September, August?
I think so.
Earlier this year. They talked about strong attendance and business support, but noted there was little participation from town committees and departments, so talked a lot about how they could increase volunteers and also potentially town department members attending. And they do plan to increase, or sorry, request potential town funding for this event in the future. Talked about their goals, including streamlining business processes and working with the land use director, downtown visibility, and crosswalk advocacy, potentially meeting with the Municipal Building Design Committee about their, their thoughts on the crosswalks. They discussed the vendor fair, which is scheduled for May 10th, 2025, that's hosted by the Parks Commission and the Lunenburg Business Association. They already have over 50 local vendors attending or registered to attend, and several attractions and live music, food trucks, and a petting zoo, and a dunk tank. And the Economic Development Committee is going to be hosting a table to engage with the community. Master Plan Steering Committee has not met, but they do have a meeting scheduled on February 3rd. The acting chair sent out a message emphasizing the need to return to a regular schedule. Talked again about the quorum challenges and the potential of removing some vacant or frequently unattended seats so that we can make a quorum. And no, that is it.
All right, thank you. The planning board met last night, but I haven't had a chance to watch it yet, because we were also meeting during that time, and then I worked all day today. So I will watch that and have an update next week. Upcoming meetings, we are meeting February 4th and February 11th. We discussed not having a meeting on February 11th, and we can decide if we'll be able to do that next week. Public comment? Any public comments from the interim town manager?
There are. With two days to go, I wanted to share a few thoughts on these past six months. First and foremost, I want to give a thank you to this select board for allowing me the opportunity to work with you, your dedicated volunteers, and your staff. I wish I'd had more time. I wish I'd had more time with you all, but these interim jobs are what I've chosen to do in my retirement, though I will say I think grandfather might have perverted, I'd mastered the game of bocce instead. I'm pleased with, and I hope you are as well, what was done these past six months by your team. With but one exception, we have filled every vacant position in place when I arrived. We have reached out to the committees to include them in the department head interviews, giving them a voice in those selections and a sense of ownership in their new employee. We have fully committed all of your ARPA funds, even when faced with unanticipated challenges at the very end, and I hope left you a bit of flexibility in completing the program despite that December 31st deadline. We have collectively listened to our employees and I dare say, given them a greater sense of participation in the process and the organization. To our citizens, I want to recognize your right to information and the public benefit of having heartfelt discussions on matters of policy. I applaud you and have, for the most part, enjoyed that. For some, I ask that you recognize the time demands some of these requests make on the staff and recognize the burden it places upon that already overworked staff trying to serve the community at large. With respect to how the board views its volunteers, I would urge the board to revisit its policy of asking long-serving appointees to appear before the board at times of renewal. Some, perhaps many, consider that a slight to their service. With respect to the staff on how it views its volunteers, I urge all to understand they provide the voice, the vision, and the energy of the community without which town government could not function. With respect to the volunteers on how it views the staff, I would ask you understand the challenges they face, the multitude of entities and persons they deal with, and the fact that not all boards are fully communicative as to their activities. Civility between all at all times is the sweetener in our coffee or when I visit my UK friend's tea. As I touched upon in my manager's report, there are great challenges before you on the revenue side, but problems can be managed once recognized. I've jokingly said to the superintendent and the head librarian, it might perhaps be their best contribution to the community if they introduced a chess club so all could play the long game rather than checkers as one faces each move. With respect to the long game, I'd like to share a few of my favorite words of wisdom. From the poem Andrea del Sarto by Browning, on pondering the hopes you may have for your community, ah but a man's reach should exceed his grasp, or what's a heaven for? From my Italian grandfather on how to achieve those hopes, by the inch it's a cinch, by the yard it's darn hard. And as I end tonight, from Edward R. Merle, good night and good luck.
Thank you, Carter. You've done so much for us, from all of the hiring, to the listening sessions and the bylaw updates, to pulling off the miracle that was making sure that all of our ARPA funds were under contract. And I just hope you know that you are truly appreciated from, by me, by the board, and by residents as well. So thank you so much for all that you've done.
That's very kind. Thank you.
I want to echo the chair's sentiments. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you, Carter, for all of your incredible work that you've done as our interim town manager. Your leadership has been instrumental in moving so many important initiatives forward, from ARPA funding and capital projects to the staff listening sessions, and it really strengthened communication and engagement within our, our town and within our staff. Your ability to navigate complex challenges while fostering collaboration has made a real difference for our community on behalf of myself and the board, as Mr. Chair just said. Thank you so much for your dedication and your positive impact you've had in Lunenburg. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I will say also, first of all, thank you for all the hard work. I don't, I know you know, because you've done it many times, but as you spoke to the residents, I don't know if the residents know that, you know, when, when you ask somebody to fill in as an interim, typically, and this was no different, it is not the smoothest of waters to begin with. And that person gets introduced to a boat on stormy waters, on a trip they never knew about, on a destination they don't know about, with a crew they don't know about, and with passengers they don't know about, and have to try to steer that and manage all of that while keeping the boat going and, you know, true, and not listing and not going off course. That is not really an exaggeration of what that job is. And so I cannot thank you enough for the expertise you brought here. We clearly, you and I, have had a few differences that were, you know, noted. We've talked about that. But I, it would, I would be remiss if I didn't say that I think you did a very good job in, in managing what my colleagues have said, the ARPA funds, keeping people on track, keeping things on track, and putting the town, I think, in a better place in the six months and getting ready for our new town manager. Lastly, and who would have known this until the last day, that you would choose a quote that is one of my top quotes, in fact, I think it's on my Facebook page, this particular quote by Browning, which I am a huge fan of Browning and of Andrea del Sarto. So I'm very moved by that because I'm moved by those things. I will add to it something that I learned from, you know, Governor Patrick when he was in office and came here during the ice storm and the legislation afterward. And he had said many times, he'd said from his grandmother, you mentioned your grandfather, and he said from his grandmother, you know, "Hope for the best and work for it." So you can't just hope for the best. You have to put in the work. You've certainly put in the work, and I thank you.
So I also want to thank you, Carter, for the past six months. I know it's been a lot of work. I got to work with you on the Budget Task Force as well, and you know the ARPA was a big thing. I wanted to get that, and every last red penny of that spent, and you did it, so thank you very much. Tom's description of the, the situation with the boat and the stormy waters, I honestly, I don't know why you do this. This, I mean, to be, especially in the interim, that's, um...
If I could just interrupt, I mean willingly, will you willingly do this?
Yeah.
And you want to.
But, but, thank goodness. And I think I'll just say that I may have to steal your grandfather's quote at some point. That's, that's one I'm gonna, gonna try to remember. So I wish you, well, wherever your next gig is, I wish you all the best, and thank you.
Very kind.
So we did get a parting gift for you, Carter, just as a token of our appreciation. You're not allowed to open it now. It is a surprise, but we hope you enjoy it.
I'm sure I will. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Carter. All right. Any public comment from the public? Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, good evening, guys. A couple things real quick.
We can't hear you.
How's that better?
You're muted.
He's not muted, actually.
Oh, well, on his side.
No.
There you go.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, first of all, good evening, guys. I want to thank the town manager as well for what you've done. I hope there's a big bottle of whiskey in that package you just got.
Wow.
I think you need it. He's Italian, I know. So anyways, thank you very much for what you've done for the town to get us on track. The other thing is, I want to also comment on the Snow Riders Club. Can't thank them enough for what they did, being with the Siberian Army on emergency disaster services across the country. Every little bit helps. And if anybody else wants to donate, either through product or cash, you can call your local Red Cross. They're down there now. But again, Amanda, thank you to all the Snow Riders for what they did. But most of all, thank you to all the citizens for donating. When, when the trucks are down, Lunenburg's there. The other thing I got to mention is, a couple of weeks ago, I dropped off and I met with the board. I left some questions there for the board to answer. I'm just wondering, I hope that doesn't get thrown away. It'd be very disappointing if we don't get a response on those letters. So I'm just gonna leave with that. And, Mr. Town Manager, congratulations.
All right, thank you, Mr. McDonald. Not going to confirm or deny whether it's whiskey in that bag, but you may be close.
You know what, again, he deserves that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Caesar.
Mr. Burden?
Yeah, just wanted to make one more comment regarding the public records requests. Realize that they do, you know, cause burdens to the town, and, but you also have to think about why someone might be requesting those things, and it's a burden for ourselves to have to even request those things. But since the town and the police will not work with us and, and come to a, a kind of some resolution here, we feel to keep our families safe, we need to request those public records. And Amanda, your comment, while the town remains committed to compliance to the Massachusetts public law, I don't agree with that. The town is not committed. They've been in violation of compliance with the Secretary of State for multiple months. And the town should realize that. The residents of this town should realize that they're not complying with the, the state law of the public records request. We have two outstanding compliance issues with the town that the Secretary of State was made aware, and they have called the town multiple times. And what we are very surprised with, two weeks ago, when the Secretary of State Division of Records called the town and discussed it with them, they found out that the town attorney or council was not even aware of these requests. Kind of questioned why, after so many months, they haven't been brought in. But that's our comment, and that's why we just wanted to make the town aware of, if those comments, Carter, were towards us about the, the public records request, we do understand that and realize that. And I do want to, you know, thank you as well. I do recognize a lot of the work you've done. I know we've had some back and forth, but you, you have turned this town probably a little towards the right side. I feel there's still some things that need to be done, and I just sent you an email to actually volunteer for the finance committee, so I hope I can receive a response to that email at least, and I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Burden.
Mr. Chair, can I respond?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Burden, I just wanted to respond, since you directed, you know, mentioned me in both of your comments. I did respond to you just as one member of this board, not speaking for the town, just to be, just to be clear there. But you've, you can, you've mentioned several times in your emails that you're open to suggestions, which is why I sent that email. And you, you said that, you know, you mentioned responding to another member. I think you, you mentioned Mr. Alonso. But those, we don't share emails outside of this. We're not allowed to. So I'm not sure what your, your response to me would have been. So I would encourage you, if you have comments, to respond back, but just...
Uh, I...
That would be the end of my thought there.
All right.
Okay, can I just respond to that?
No, sorry, Mr. Burden.
I believe you are, I believe you are a copy on that, Amanda.
No, this is not a discussion. We're not going to get into back and forth.
Okay.
Thank you for your public comments tonight. Have a good night, Mr. Burden. Any other public comments from the board?
No.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. It is 7:43 PM, and the select board is adjourned. We will see you next week.